Look, you know, let me, and if, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. Like I, like I said a minute ago, with, with what Mr. Sewell said a couple of weeks ago, you get what you pay for, and with sixty some odd attorneys in the firm, it's not only Mr. North, but anytime we have an employment issue, it's, what's his name, Barton Quinn? He's working on it because he's an employment, he's an employer attorney, a labor attorney. If it has anything to do with, with real estate specialty, litigation specialty, criminal, et cetera, if it's something that, that may be out of the purview of Mr. North, which I find that difficult to believe, that, that most things would be, he has access to, to other expert attorneys that deal in specifically that area. And I say all of that to say this. Folks, you don't want, I, I deal with attorneys every day, ninety percent of my business comes from attorneys. You don't necessarily want, with all due respect to them, because I've worked for some of them, with one of the attorneys there on TV, talking about they specialize in this area of law or that area of law, to try to come in here and be your city attorney. You don't want someone that specializes in, in injury or insurance or bankruptcy. Talking about one individual, you want someone that has the backing of a, of a firm.
So, what's your figure? What was all that figured, yeah? It's gotta be figured. I was talking about expertise.
Do you have a figure in that, Mr. Mayor?
I'd ask for ten percent, which is a thousand dollars a month.
That puts it up to what, one thirty-two?
One thirty-two.
He took this on precedent when we hired him to start with, at nine, no one was up front. Then they gave him, the meantime, thirty, I think thirty, got a thirty thousand dollar raise. Since then?
I can't, I, I, I'm not, I can't speak for Mr. North, but I am. And, and I'm not trying to defend. I really don't think he expected the magnitude that the...
He made, he made common one day that he understood why Tom Anderson charged what he charged.
Well, I don't know if he did or not, but...
But he did, he did tell them that.
But, uh, well, well, here, here's, here's where I am on this. There's, I understand, I understand totally, it's, it's a job that people don't understand how complicated and how voluminous the workload is. I've, I've, I've tried to tell people that for seven years, and, you know, it, as some people have listened, some have... I personally, four months ago, voted no to a salary increase across the board for all the turn, for all employees. I would be a hypocrite if I voted a salary increase for anybody. And so I, I, I can't do it at any amount, and that's just, that's just where I am. And I have, I have, I have an issue with, with timing, and that it's in the middle of the budget year. You know, if we could, if we could come back and look March, April timeframe, when we were doing the budget. Again, I, I will not argue at all that the job is frankly probably worth more than a hundred twenty thousand a year. I mean, I, I won't argue with that. But again, I feel like I, I am in a position where I, I can't tell the fire department, firefighters, or the police department, you guys don't deserve a raise this year, and then I give it to somebody else. And I didn't, you know, I think if we, if we were flush with money, that would be great. But we, we spent out a whole lot of money this past year.
We won't spend so much, probably a little run.
We, we have, and I think it's, this is a bridge year, it's a tough year. If we get through, through this fiscal year, I think we'll be in good shape. But again, I, I can't handle it. I can't be in a position where I tell some folks, sorry, we can't give you a raise this year, and, and not have that apply to everybody.
Well, one thing I had, like I say, on the situation, and, and they have got, I won't call names, nothing else, because I don't want to embarrass nobody. But, um, every time we change the title, as few people get raises. Just a couple of changes now with their title are getting, getting more money. Only ten thousands and more up.
I, I don't know who that would be.
I won't call names, I don't want to embarrass nobody.
Well, and again, and again, I think, you know, we have, we have spectacular employees, and everyone, if we were in a position where we, we hadn't reduced our, our reserves down to a point, you know, I would love to give a hefty increase to, to all of our employees. I didn't feel like we could do it four months ago, heading into this, this budget year. I would like to think we can do it, and I know everyone ended up getting a raise, and, and that's fine. I think, what was it, a quarter? So it's five hundred and twenty dollars a month?
That's like fifteen cents.
That's twenty-five cents. This is what?
I've had a lot.
Five hundred and twenty dollars a month for, for full-time employees? Or five hundred and twenty dollars a year, yeah, sorry. So, you know, five hundred and twenty dollars a year is what we, we wound up giving, again, everybody else. I think it's... Well, let me, and I understand that, and, and, but we're not talking about an individual here. Yes, he's sitting here, but, you know, we're talking about to have, you know, a sixty-five member law firm basically at our beck and call, and that have the experts to defend us in any kind, any type of litigation that may come up without charging us anymore now. You know, let me ask, it appears that, you know, Councilman Sewell has a, a problem with this. Let me, let me just go over a couple of, some figures here. Two thousand and nine, our city attorney was paid a hundred and fifty, five thousand, five hundred a year. Two thousand and ten, our city attorney was paid a hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Two thousand and eleven, he was paid a hundred and nineteen thousand. And in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, I'm assuming that all of that is under the year two thousand and twelve, but two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, because he was replaced in, at the end of two thousand and twelve, so therefore, some additional invoices came in two thousand and thirteen. But if you combine two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, it's two hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Now, now, folks, that's not Mark Ravis' numbers, those are numbers that came from the city, okay? And we're talking about a hundred and thirty-two. So, I, what, so what is, what is, I understand your position.
Before the final, final year two, that, that was, that included the severance.
Yes, it did.
Which is five hundred dollars, so, so really, the amount that was actually billed...
A hundred and eighty-something, which is still fifty thousand dollars more a year, okay, than what this gentleman is asking for. So what's the problem?
You ran on, when you ran, you ran on to get rid of the term you had, but you said you made them look funny, so we did.
Right. And those figures that I mentioned are essentially...
But we're inching this one up there?
I'm sorry?
You're inching this one up there?
He's, he's...
Started at nine, he agreed to work for nine thousand dollars.
That was three, three year, for three months, for three months, and it was three years. Well, not just me, but the council.
Yeah, with, you had a part against it. Gave thirty thousand dollars. So, you know.
But still, you're talking about...
I think if you go spend that kind of money, by the way, we go out and see if there's any other firms that go in here, it'd be, it'd probably go spend that kind of money.
What are we going to do in the meantime?
But I guess you're going to walk off it, but, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
I don't know, I don't know.
I'm just asking the question.
If it's like a place, then the employees give them a twenty-five cent raise. You stated yourself that, that you couldn't go for the raise, so we need to save money, put in our, put in the, save their rate a day for them.
And I've also been an advocate for, 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 uh, bringing more employees in, for hiring more people as well.
We haven't hired, we haven't hired them, we need to.
I, I agree, we did.
That's why you go pay him, hire somebody, coach, cover this coach field, we can hire, he's well trained. And we did, we did hire some folks then.
But how long has it been since, since, you know, this gentleman got a raise? You know, the city, it's a different, you know, the city employees, like, you know, every year. But, but again, we're not only talking about one individual here, we're talking about a firm of sixty some odd.
Well, I thought, I thought Mr. Renshaw had a firm with more than that, that you could...
And, and he was paid his last year here, fifty thousand, sixty, well, sixty-three thousand, and I've not said his name one time, sixty-three thousand dollars more.
Obviously, we had to.
Sixty-three thousand dollars more than what?
Look what we got, look what we got. You get what you pay for, just like I was saying, you got the quarter raise, you would not have that if it didn't for you. I guarantee, I guarantee.
There were...
After we...
Well, you know what, I think maybe this dean and the general assembly had something to do with that.
They might have, but, but we, but they both...
And both was...
And it brought up, if we had not hired no, nobody.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think we had a little tie at the speed that cost us about six hundred thousand dollars. That was during the time.
And, but we did, we did hire some folks then. One of the young ladies, I won't call her names, is going out, probably bringing us businesses in to our city. How long have they been with us now? Has anybody said anything, probably, in front of them?
I can tell you right now, there's a project that they've been involved in that's very close to happening. I can tell you that with all certainty.
I agree, we don't, that, oh, this could be five, ten year downtime.
Or it could be thirty days.
Or it could be tomorrow, but it kept to it, it have not brought nothing back. But if we're willing, then when it comes, if the contract runs out, then they could automatically just free years of another contract. This will cost us minimum.
Top question.
I don't know, there's a motion.
I make a motion to increase the city attorney's salary a thousand dollars a month.
No, I'll say it. You have a motion, you have a second. You have a complex question? Go call, please.
Councilmember Ravis?
Yes.
Councilmember Kedall?
Yes.
Councilmember May?
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell?
No.
Bailey?
No. Motion is approved. I have a discussion of advertising for Design by C-5, A-1 interchange project. Who has any information on that? Anyone?
Personally, this was brought up, we, we talked about the design of the C-5, A-1, the phase two of that project. We did that with T-Dot, because that would be, that's important, so we had to do that within some of the years. You know, how long the project was going to take and stuff, I don't know. Councilmen would go ahead and pursue that now, or if I want to wait until we're down to phase one before we figure out anything about it.
Have we received any funds from Hamilton County?
No, my understanding is we, the work will be done, then we will invoice the county to get money.
Thank you. I do think we need to move ahead with this, this item as soon as we can. Of course, the agreement we have with Hamilton County is that they would provide, and I think, you know, technically, these are the terms, they would provide five hundred thousand for phase one this fiscal year, and then provide five hundred thousand for phase two next fiscal year. So we need to expedite the process of getting phase two moving. I would hate to end up having to go back and revise an agreement with the county because phase two slid past next fiscal year. So there's, there's issue there. I, I think, again, we need to, to move on this, period of time, I don't know what all the steps would be, but I think we need to get this in the pipeline.
Because their participation changed in our initial discussion.
What I heard earlier this evening, I'm sure that for us to be kept in the loop a little better than we was on this last one.
And I would second that. Yes, there, there were, you know, there were definitely issues with preliminary estimates that, you know, the scope of the work changed, the extension of the work changed. And then, I think, as, as fellow from Arcadia's mentioned previously, a lot of these construction projects are just coming in higher than, than what the estimates are. Granted, there were other, other aspects to, to phase one being more than, yeah, more than what the, the preliminary estimate was, but, uh, that apparently, as, as the economy is getting better, everything's getting more expensive. So, but yes, I agree with you, absolutely. So, you know, whatever we need to do to expedite phase, phase two, to get that ball rolling, and I would be in favor of, and I don't, I don't know if we need to necessarily vote on anything, but... Do you? Should we, I mean, would it be, I guess the next step would be vote to move ahead with advertising for the design? I think we should first find out if the final design has been accepted by T-Dot.
So, Arcadia's figures have been, if we have a seven hour, if we have a question, that question?
T-Dot certainly will have some input on it.
Yes, you're okay with it.
Do you know if that has come in? I, I know they were waiting to hear from it. Right, but they're still, T-Dot submitted that HWA, and they're still waiting to get that HWA approval on, on time. How long? They asked, I, they were hoping it already had it, but I would hope in the next two, three weeks, I guess. But I can, I can reach out to T-Dot, if that's okay. Sure. For returning the information I received. I said, I'm certainly no expert in this area, so I'm assuming it would be proven to wait until we actually have that final approval. I do remember Steve Allen saying that, you know, whatever is approved, don't dare change a thing because it starts the whole process over again. And we don't want to be waiting for another year for the highway administration to give approval to whatever, you know, if it's a minor change. And we don't want to start the block all over again. Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. So, be sitting on go, be ready to, to move whenever we get that approval back.
I have a G, discussion, uh, concerning city identification cards for retired employees, Mr. Mayor.
Good man. Yes. Uh, I asked this, we have got some guitar, people has guitars, and they do not have a, they got the certificate showing their guitar. They like have a certificate, putting a vehicle showing the guitar from City B Street. They're not asking for no, uh, card saying they can carry gun, nothing like that. All they just ask for is an ID card, and some of our officers does have it. And that's all they're asking for, they're not asking if they carry gun, anything else. ID card showing their guitar from City B Street. Not asking for gun permit, to carry. I put that forward motion.
I'll say it, we have a second, okay? What exactly would the process be for setting this up?
However, we have, like you, we're explaining only.
With the administrative point, do you what, what exactly would we need to, to do?
The list of boards that I have, whether they're all, um, ex-police officers, and it's a police ID card, so we have police on it, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Showing their guitar, B Street is a police officer, not, and they're not asking for, if they have a carry, no gun, or anything else. Just all they want to say on it, guitar from B Street is a police officer.
Some photo ID?
Something similar to what the council has, it's, it has our picture on it, the CDC, CDV Street, and then at the bottom, it has council member, something similar to that, that theirs can say retire.
Retired, police officer.
They want to have police on it.
If I could maybe clarify something.
You're ready to go ask?
As you know, under Tennessee law, how do I, it's thirty-eight, eight, one sixteen, there's provision under, under there for retired officers. This follows back into the two thousand and four enacted, uh, LISO Act from the President, Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act. When an officer retires in good standing with the department, they can submit to get a retired officer's commission. With that commission comes a good improvement. They have to qualify yearly to maintain that. If they're not in good standing, they're not eligible. That's the criteria basically under the state law, and also post-commission. Post-commission is trumped, of course, by the state law, but it, it also, if you retire in good standing, you're eligible for that.
Is, is there anything prohibiting these list of officers from...
I don't know the list, I don't know the list specifically.
The list, I split out the one asking for three.
Well, I don't know who's on that list. I know that some are eligible and some are not.
Uh, Mr. Reed, uh, what I was saying long ago, they don't want on that, and they can carry gun.
Again, Councilman Kedall, do you have a retired?
The only thing I got was from TCRS stating that I am a retired, growing a TCRS pension from local government. That's the only thing that I got, and that come through TCRS.
Okay, the only thing I have, that, that I am, Councilman May, don't want to die out for law enforcement, is thirty-eight, eight, one sixteen. If it was just a city retired, just some of the city of B Street's retirement, that has, if the city manager tells me to like one, we got the machine, we can whip them out. But if it says something about law enforcement, then it would, then it would follow under thirty-eight, eight, one sixteen.
Even for not asking for a carry gun?
Yeah, that's the only provision for a law enforcement ID.
Does it say police on this ID?
Yes, has to.
On the, on the ID that Councilman May requesting, would also say police retiring?
Yes, it falls under the, uh, Leos Act. But we're not, we wouldn't be taking care of the gun permit after, because they'd have to do that independently, wouldn't they?
Oh, they got, they already got their gun permit already.
They would have to, under this retirement, under this retirement, they have to come back every year and qualify for it. They don't come back last year, they tell them to stay. They can't, or a post-certified instructor.
Right. So, so what their requesting is for them to say police on it, retiring, retired police?
All they're asking to do is say on it, a guitar from City B Street is a police officer, that's all they're asking. They're not asking for no gun permit or nothing else, or they got their own gun permit already.
I don't see the legal consequences to that, and again, unless they're, they left here under all three tests. And they got their, already got their certificate, just showing, just a guitar from B Street.
The only issue there might be, and I would have to check with our insurance, is because if they have a card that has police on it, even as retired, if they're not complying with this, may bring the city to have liability.
I think, I tell, I tell you what, um, can, I'd like to withdraw my second for the reason being, between now and our next council meeting, can the two chiefs get together and...
Get the list?
Try to, try to sort this out on, and get with the insurance and...
Well, yeah, let's, I'm not talking to you.
Since this has been brought out, I'll just, I'll just go ahead, and we'll just bring everything out.
Without mentioning names?
This is, there's a couple of them here that, that don't need to have a card that says B Street, don't need to have a card that says police or anything else. Yes, they retired from City of B Street. They were given the option of retiring, being terminated, okay, for different reasons. And I'm just going to be straightened up forward with them, and if there was one that had an accident, let's say in an accident, there's documentation of that, or there was an investigation done, that person had to leave because of that. There was another one that was arrested by the GBI in the state of Georgia, okay? Those charges were all dropped. When those charges were dropped, he, uh, he had to retire. Uh, as far as the rest of them, that I can see them here, sure, I, I don't see any problems with those, uh, with, with the exception of one other one that was in court here for some type of criminal activity here a couple of weeks ago. I don't know the disposition on that or anything, but I mean, if we're going to do this, we're going to do this long-term, okay? And we're going to honor these people that retired from here, and they are in good standing. I am perfectly fine with that, I support it a hundred and ten percent.
Oh, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you.
I don't want to do anything that is going to look bad on the city in the future because they present that, or they get pulled over, they get incarcerated, and that ID is in their bill of foreclosure.
Don't misunderstand me, I'm agreeing with you, that's why I'm asking for you two guys to get together and if necessary, possibly bring this up. I, I think it's an, I think it's an internal decision. And, and, and there's a state statute right there that already tells that.
I have one more question, and I would like to ask it out. When they retired, did they not get a certificate showing they retired from City B Street?
Depending on who it was, sir, I can't tell you, because I, I wasn't.
I do know they have a certificate showing they did retire from City B Street, as a police officer.
I know one got a plaque, or two, two got a plaque, I know for sure. And that was Richard Owens and Bill Williams.
Okay, I can, I can tell you this, this is the first time I've heard any of this, and there's no way in the world I would vote on this issue tonight. I mean, there's just, you could, you could just forget it, I'm not voting on it. I've, I've never heard any of this until right now.
But I've been, I've been working on this, back and forth, Mr. Reed.
We've been working on it about nine months.
Yeah, and Mr. Owens has been working on it.
Yes.
And the city manager's been working on it.
Well, let me ask the city manager, if, what I'm hearing from you, is there's a certain group of former police employees that effectively want to get out of jail free card or something, is that what we're talking about?
No.
They think flash, if they kind of like get pulled over. Can you jump on that?
No, sure, all they're asking for is saying that they retired from the City of East Ridge.
We can talk to T M L, I'm not sure T L-
Just don't put voice on.
I don't even govern, I don't even-
And I would be okay with that.
I don't have a problem with them saying retire from City of East Ridge.
I would be okay with that.
You put police or you put public safety or anything like that on the ID is completely different.
Because there are different considerations, we'll, like I said, we'll talk to T M L and say, I'm not sure that's going to be the ideal issue. So, there are other, other issues.
We do still have a motion, uh, Mr. Manning's motion is still, still out there, is there, is there a second?
Mr. Manning, let me ask you this. Would you care to amend your motion and for it just to say retired on it and not state, based upon what the state statute and the federal guidelines that the chief has read, would you have a problem with just saying, putting the word retired on their card and leave off the police?
I, retired from what?
Just retired. From the City of East Ridge.
I see what that you're calling, you said just retired. I have no problem with that.
We can, based on city manager.
City manager, chief.
But that would be open to every former, every just hired employee, not just police officers.
They what?
They don't want one at all. Right, right. They have to initiate the process themselves, we wouldn't just automatically make them work.
We, uh, would, would you care to restate your motion?
I don't restate my motion, just saying if they, these people, I will call the name, chief, this guy's over here, saying if they retired from the City of East Ridge. Okay?
Well, there's-
If I could get the minutes, I'll take, uh-
Uh, I'll give them the-
There's, there's a motion, there's a motion, is there a second?
Mr. Manning, would you be able to let him us talk to T M L first, because I don't want to open a panel or rock some lobby, but I can say, you know, our insurance-
I wish I had my motion, how long you going to take to get that out?
Tomorrow morning.
All right.
I, unless they have to do some research or something, yeah, we'll make the call tomorrow morning.
Will you get with Mr. Reed and, uh, city manager that ten dollars?